Call to order the council work session for city of east grand forks for Tuesday, August 13th, 2019 is now five o'clock. City clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander, council president Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council vice president Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riepel.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does the term. Corum number one, request to file plans and specifications for 19 AJ1, 6th Avenue Northeast improvements. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, yeah, so next week we'll be filing the plans and specs. For 2019 assessment job number one, curb gutter and paving on 6th Avenue Northeast. I do have preliminary sets of plans and specs here if anybody is interested in even looking at them. So again, I did kind of show you what the proposed budget was. Those were basically the numbers at this point that were discussed at the improvement hearing that we had here a couple of weeks ago. So looking at filing plans next week, looking at setting a bid date for September 13th. And I might ask for permission at some point here is if we open the bids on the 13th, we do have a council meeting on the 17th. I would like to, if we can, maybe bring the bid results to the council meeting that night to try to get approval. I don't know, Ron, with it being an assessment project, if there's a waiver of appeals, waiver of assessments that, you know, we could ever get from those property owners, just to kind of speed up the process. I know in the past, if there's any concern of residents, business owners, you know, appealing the assessments, you know, we've actually held off, held the final hearing before we even award the project. The problem we have a little bit on this one is just timing, because my goal would be to try to get the, we got some storm sewer work we're going to need to do. I'd like to try to get that done this year, allow for any settlement over the winter. And then next year, we would core the street out, put in the gravel base, curb and gutter and paving. So just with timing of everything, you know, losing even a couple of weeks this time of years is probably going to mean we may not even get the utility work done. So again, I don't know.
Well, that's possible. Essentially, we've got the estimates and everything out there. The way you would be able to do it at this point is they could waive any objection up to a specific amount. And then if the assessments came in over your estimated amount, then they would be able to potentially contest that overage, we'll just call it, depending upon how it works out. But I'd have to, I'd have to look at that.
So that's something, yeah, we can look into. We will have bid results by the 13th too. So I mean, it's a case, if we got to talk to the business owners, get signatures, whatever, you know, we could always try to get those ahead of the, you know, the September 20th meeting too. So anyway, I guess that's kind of where we're at. Anyone have any questions?
May I have anything for Mr. Emery? Scene on cert.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Number two, request for direction on on sale liquor license. Ms. Nelson.
Okay. In the packet was an RCA, basically just explaining, in the last recent weeks, the admin office had been contacted by a couple of different interested parties in the possibility of having interest in more than one on sale liquor license. How our current ordinance reads, no person can have direct or indirect interest in more than one license of the same class within the city. I looked into this a little bit further, and I know Ron did as well, and I talked to our inspector of the area. There is, you cannot have more than one off sale in a municipality. You cannot have an on sale license and also be a manufacturer, an importer, or a wholesaler. That is not allowed. But currently, there's nothing in state statute that does not stop you from having more than one on sale, if it is allowed by the city. Both parties are interested in moving forward with their plans, and I guess I need direction from you guys if that's something that would be allowed. If so, we would have to modify our ordinance. And we could, in doing so, if you guys do allow it, we can start working with the parties that are interested and start moving forward with what they would like. There is an interested party here. I did not want to name names in case they didn't want to talk about it, but if you want to say anything or add anything.
Number one, do we need two licenses? They've been explaining to us that, anyway, before we get started, you know, we're thinking about putting.
Bobby, if you want to come up to the microphone so people can hear.
We're planning, and I built the three-plex in our theater chain nine years ago for the intention of eventually putting in a restaurant and bar. It was a trend in our industry, so we have a full service health license kitchen in there now. And so at this point in time, after watching all the theaters, we try not to jump into something as a fad. But theaters across the whole nation are now serving food and alcohol in their theaters. And as you know, I'd like to stay ahead of the game in our area. The closest one to us now is Duluth and St. Cloud, I believe. Those are our closest. We would like to jump ahead and have it done and taken care of so that we're in and there like we did with the luxury recliners and the other stuff. We want to stay ahead of the game in our industry as much as we can. But talking about two licenses, but Megan, it was brought up by a beer supplier we visited with already and said that he didn't understand why we would need two. We want to serve, be able to serve alcohol throughout the whole entire theater. Okay, so if you want a beer and go into the movie, you can go into the movie with a beer, going through the normal procedures you would in any bar. But our neighbor across the street, Boardwalk, has one license and the place upstairs and downstairs. So he was just wondering why we needed two. If we need two, I guess we're fine with it, you know, but I just would like that clarified.
I guess, Bob, I'd have to look at it a little bit closer, but in talking to the state, based upon the layout of your building, they were the ones that were indicating that there was a requirement to have two because of the, if I understand what you're talking is, one of the three plaques, we'll say, where you were going to have the bar and restaurant located, then you've got other establishments, you've got a great big common public area for anybody to come through, and then you'd be removing beverages from there and taking them to another location. And that was, that was the explanation.
But not outside the building?
No, it's all his building.
No, I'm just, I'm just telling you, the explanation from the state of Minnesota to us.
Right.
Was for that purpose, and they are the ones that would be.
Regulating.
Regulating and forcing that. So that's why this was, this was brought up. And I think Megan can confirm that as well.
Yep. So when it comes to the state, the premise needs to be listed, and it needs to be one continuous space. So some places, like if they have a patio outside, they list their patio, but you have to go through their building to get to their patio, and it's all one big space. When I was talking with our inspector, and maybe if we, if you want, we can invite him up, and he, or I can give you his number, and you can talk to him about it as well. But he said with the big hallway, it's one entrance and then another entrance, and there's too much space in between. He said something, if there was, you know, a way to connect the two, you know, without having that outside.
Not feasibly.
Yeah, yep, and that's, that's kind of what I told him. So, but I can definitely contact, you know, give you his contact information.
I would like to sit down with him, you know.
Absolutely.
Because like I say, you know, Boardwalk's completely upstairs too, you know.
Yep, yep.
So they still have one license.
Yep.
So, but anyway, that was our plan, and that's where we'd like to move forward. We got preliminary health department licenses that, you know, we're going to be sending that in this week, so. But if anyone's got any questions, we sure like to answer them.
The only thing I would like to add is that there is another biz, or another person who's interested in a business, and they already have interest in a current business. So it's not just the situation, there is another situation where this is also being asked for. So depending on what the state says and what it comes down to, I would still need clarification on what you guys would, would say if somebody wanted interest in more than one on sale license.
So to accommodate, Mr. Moore, if the state says that, says, no, this is what he has to do, we would have to change our city ordinance to allow him as an owner to have two different licenses, because right now it doesn't say that.
Correct.
So accommodate that, that's the reasoning behind your.
Right, our ordinance doesn't, but the state allows it.
Yes.
And the other one is two totally different businesses.
Antisays, yes.
Not in the same location, so.
Correct.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. So would a different corporation hold license, or do you currently, would it be under the same, like, if you needed two, would you, you wouldn't form another company just to have this, right?
I wouldn't, no.
It'd be one company in one location. I guess, I'm baffled as to why this is an issue.
Well, I am a little bit also, but we can visit with him, and if that's the way he wants it, that's, we can live with it.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't getting something wrong, but it is one corporation looking for one.
Right.
License to run.
And we have 15 screens, you know, so they'd be able to take it to any of them.
Is there any, any historical, what's the purpose of not allowing more than one locate, or more than one license?
That was discretionary by the city council, and I do know.
I mean, what's the purpose of, what, was it a scarcity thing, like to allow many people to have opportunity to do it? Was it, was there some sort of like monopoly thing that the state was worried? I don't understand what the purpose of doing that is.
Well, it had nothing to do with the state.
Well, though, oh.
This is, this is a city ordinance right now to be able to have two on sale liquor license owned by more than one individual. That was, that, that actually had been in place for quite a while. I can't even remember, under the old ordinance, though, it allowed, it allowed a 10%, no more than a 10% interest in a second, a second location. You know, and to ask me back then what the, the process was for it, or if they didn't want to have monopolies and have one person owning all the liquor licenses in town, I can't give you the answer to that.
I guess the only other thing I could think of is, you know, if, if someone was violating some sort of the, you know, the ordinances or the whatever, if you wanted to punish them, they could just move their operation to a different venue and, and kind of get around punishment a little bit. But I don't, I, before I move forward and try to figure out if this is, why are we doing it? Why, why do we have this rule would be important for us to figure out. I mean, what's the benefit to the city of?
Well, I will say that I did look up the league's model ordinance for when it comes to liquor licenses, and they have the same phrasing in there.
And that might be why I thought the state was, but it's probably the league's model or whatever.
Yep.
Like I said, maybe we should do some research as to what the benefit is. And then the other thing I was wondering is, does the clause about manufacturer, wholesale, importer, not able to have on sale, would that preclude like a brewer?
That is a separate license. Like you can get a brewer's license, and then with a brewer's license.
You can do on sale.
No, depending on, you can have like a taproom license. So then you can sell on your premise X amount, but you, I think, have to manufacture X amount before you can qualify for a taproom.
Okay, that, I just wanted to make sure that if.
Yep, we have that for the brewer and the distillery.
We talked about it.
Yep, we have that.
Didn't conflict, so.
Yep, yep, that's covered.
Anything else, sir? Meg Gander.
Yeah, I guess I can agree with Mr. Demers, and the first step is to make sure that the state is going to require two separate licenses. That's really step one. And then step two, I would be inclined to maybe mirror the state statute and, and make allowance for it if there's no compelling reason not to, even though it might conflict a little bit with the league. If it does mirror the state statute, and it seems to bring common sense to this situation of allowing him to serve it across his whole property, I would, I'd support it for what's that, for what that's worth. But I do like step one is, let's really make sure it's even necessary cost wise, you know, maintaining two licenses would, would add some cost.
We'd still have the issue with the other party wanting to do two, so.
Yep.
Either way, we'd have to decide if we're going to allow ownership of two, no matter what, even if he's not required. So, Mr. Helms.
I guess my question is, does the city even have license available? Do we have enough available, or is there some?
Those are two different things.
Yes.
That's two different things. We have, anything that has a restaurant with it, with an on sale, is, is not considered towards our liquor licenses for?
Yes, so, yeah, none of those count towards it.
Standalone bars.
The plugs don't count towards it. Yeah, it's only if it's a standalone bar, and we can have up to seven. And currently, we don't have any that are just bars.
Okay.
So we do have seven available.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. Just to caution you, even if you, if you can't get one license, and we have to get two licenses, and we amend everything, still caution you, I don't think that you'd be able to serve in, all of it in one side and carry it across the hallway into the other one. Each place would have to have its own taps to be able to serve up.
Right, and if we had to have two, we would probably only have beer and wine on one side, and then the mixed drinks and everything would just be on the three-plex side.
Okay.
Because I don't think I'm going to open two full service bars.
Yep.
Work.
Any other questions?
Little homework to do and research to do and.
What's, what's the timeline that we're looking at on this, or on these, or?
Well, I guess.
I want to make sure there's no issues before I spend.
Yep.
Three, $400,000 on starting.
So if we wait for the next work session, is that fine?
Well, I can get Mr. Moore, the inspector's information first thing tomorrow, so we can get started on that right away. And I guess my other question would be, are you interested in allowing a person to have interest in more than one location? Because if, if that, if you are, we can start the amending of the ordinance. If you are not, then it makes it a non-issue.
How long does it take us to amend it? We have to have a public.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's the same as just.
Same as, so we'd have to have two readings.
Two readings.
Yep, two readings, and then.
I have no problem with that, as long as they're following all the rules that we asked them to follow.
I don't have an issue with that either.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Take the call.
Number three, updated in 2020 elections. Megan Shaw.
Sorry. I just wanted to bring this to your attention because we will be talking about budgets next week, and I had to figure out a budget for the elections. I don't know how many of you followed, followed this or not, but we are going to have a presidential primary. It will be held on March 3rd, which is completely different than what we're used to. We will still have our other primary in August with all the other races on it. The presidential primary is going to be different a little bit than the other primary. There's actually going to be four ballots, so people will actually have to say, I want the Democratic, Republican, and actually, there's four official parties in the state of Minnesota, two being pot parties, so there's going to be four ballots. The last election, we did have direct balloting, which I think we, we were an absentee location, and then seven days before the election, we were, we did direct balloting where this was set up as a poll place. And we, I think, had a really good response, especially before the general election, the primary. Of course, we never really have a very good turnout, but during the general, we had a lot of people that were very happy that we had it. I asked, I did get ahold of the county today, and I asked about the direct balloting for the presidential primary, because that'll add, if we had to do that, it would add about $2,000, a little over $2,000 to the budget. We do not have to do direct balloting. They can still come up, we can still be in absentee location, so all the information is available upstairs, and then we'll just do the envelopes where they can mail it in, or if it's within a couple of days, I think we might be, or the county might be coming over, we might have to run over and just drop off envelopes to make sure that they get there on time. So if we don't do direct balloting here, but we are an absentee location, that'll save us, like I said, a couple thousand dollars. And I guess is that, is that something that I can still proceed with? Is that something that the council would be okay with, that we continue doing? But like I said, I think, especially since this is going to be the first presidential primary that we've had, I believe, since like sometime in the early 90s. I know they're going to try and get a lot of information out there to educate the public, to let them know what's going on, but again, it's a primary, so I don't know how great of a turnout we're going to have. So the number that I gave to Carla includes that, those seven days out with the times that we have to spend. I do have to double check and see if we have to be here on that Saturday before, and that's only a five hour stint, so if we just had to do that, that would actually still save us a lot if we didn't have to do the seven days before. So do you guys have any questions about that? I just kind of wanted to give you a heads up on it. More information will probably be coming, or, you know, we'll try and get out as much information as we can, and try and educate everyone and let them know what's going on.
What's your preference?
My preference? Right now, if we didn't have to, if we didn't do direct balloting for the presidential primary, that would actually probably help, because then, I have a feeling there's going to be people that are going to be upset having to declare what ballot they want. I don't know why the state set it up that way. They were actually going to try and do it mail ballot, and that was voted down. And I guess I'd rather have people yell at me than yell at my election judges, which they're probably going to get yelled at enough on that, on that day. We will have to have all five wards open on March 3rd. So, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I have enough troops ready to go for that day, so.
I don't have a problem.
So.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've done the direct balloting down here for how many cycles? One cycle?
Cycle.
Okay. And it is, I agree, it is, you do get low turnout.
Yep.
But it is a benefit, and it's, I think, a growing trend that we're going to see, we're going to see more desire for that. I think one of the things that we have done well, not just here, but regionally, I think, for the most part, people keep similar polling places, they make it consistent, they make the times consistent, they make all these things consistent. I think that's one of the reasons why we do have traditionally good turnout, and I think that's an important thing. And while it, it is, it's not easy always, and it's, it does cost, I would prefer to keep on that consistent thing, especially with something that's as new as the direct, the direct voting.
Yeah. I, we did do that in 2018, just because I wanted to kind of ease into it a little bit before we did a presidential, a presidential election with it, just so we kind of got used to it. And it's obviously, you know, similar steps and everything like that, there's just a couple of extra steps to go through, and so we tested it out last time, and it seemed to go really well. So we'll try and get the word out and let them know that we're doing it again.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Request to fix roof line of VFW arena. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, if you all remember back to the summer of 2017, we had a windstorm that damaged the roof at the VFW arena and the addition over top of the locker rooms. Put a lot of work into getting that area repaired and put a new roof on it. And then this spring, when the snow melted, we had leaking through the roof there again, and had a couple of different local roofing contractors up there and found, I kind of included a little sketch drawing for you, but found on the connection of the two buildings where there's an eve that was connected with rubber roofing, and we found that just the heavy weight of the snowfall that we had was the best reasoning we could find, that there were a couple of different locations that that rubber roofing tore, and ultimately caused the leaking in a couple of spots. So I had a few different roofing contractors up there this spring and early summer to try to find a solution to be able to alleviate that issue. And what is sketched and what's provided with the price estimate for you from GW and Sons Construction is actually to take off the main panel of the roof that goes about, I'm using rough numbers here, but about 20 feet into the main arena. Take that piece off all the way across the entirety of that addition, and then put a longer piece of metal style roofing so that we get rid of the eve that we have there and create a more consistent, seamless, seamless slope from the main building onto that addition part, and would tie in with an actual metal closure from the main roof into the addition, and, and get rid of that eve and that spot where we have the rubber roofing and the chance for the heavy snow pile to build up. So that's what's in front of you. I've had, I had, was up on the roof this morning with Tecta America formerly, or, which used to be Greenberg Roofing, with a couple of their service consultants to kind of have them give us a second opinion. They do a lot of rubber roofing, but to make sure that they agreed that this was our best form of action to take, to try to alleviate the problem under the circumstances we've had, and they agreed that this is, short of taking the entire roof off and restructuring how the entire roof line is done, that this is the, the best option we would have to give ourselves a more permanent fix to the leaking problems we've had there. So looking for approval to have GW and Sons do that work.
Not going to have any, I know that, and the code says it doesn't cover any electrical or plumbing or heating or anything, that there's nothing they have to do to remove or, so it's going to be more cost other than what's on the bid?
Not that we know it, not that I can foresee. We think, and we went up and inspected the entire roof both today with Tecta and with GW and Sons earlier this summer, and, and we think the roof in general is in pretty good condition, short of the work that is prescribed in this, and we really feel like it'll just be pulling off those metal panels and then creating a more, with a metal closure, a consistent approach into that, the lower roof line of the addition part of it. So not that I can foresee, you know.
Does that have anything? Mr. Demers.
Thank you. So this will, it won't go all the way to the edge of that second building, it'll go somewhere in between?
Somewhere in between. It's about, it's about seven feet further than what it is today.
Is that, and it's a flat roof with like scuppers, or how does it drain?
The, the new roof on the addition is called a raised seam, so it's a seamless, there's no screw heads, it's, and it's a, so it's like a lock and groove raised seam roof. And the old part of the roof is one, is the more traditional D rib style of metal roofing. So that metal closure is kind of, it's, it's a, basically the way it's been described to me is it looks like a Z, but it creates, the screws would be inset on the inside of the metal, so there wouldn't be any exposed screws in the new, in the new closure, the metal closure that would connect the two. And then there would just be a heck of a lot of the, I don't have the terminology, but the double sided tape and the sealant and everything underneath where it gets screwed together, so it creates that, that consistent closure.
But I mean, the, the new building is flat roofed, right?
Correct. Other than that, it's a raised seam. It's a raised seam, but there's, it's, it's, it's not 100% flat, but it's nearly flat.
Right, but and then it flow, and then there's scuppers along the edges, or is it flow off the edge?
It just flows off the edge.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Is there a warranty to this work?
I haven't asked that question, I certainly can.
We've done a lot of roof stuff in the recent past, and it seems like, once they come in, they sometimes leave, not that GW would leave, but it'd just be nice if there is issues with this design or with the, with the way it's, I don't, I wouldn't anticipate them doing anything incorrectly, but it's kind of designed on the fly. If it doesn't work, is there, are they going to come back and help us fix it?
I can certainly ask.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. The rubber roof on the addition that was put on in 2017.
Yep.
I would question whether it was installed correctly, because I, snow load on a rubber roof should not separate it from the wall. So I would question whether it was installed correctly and whoever. So I would question whether it was installed correctly and whoever installed it should be warranting that work.
We've had a little bit of that conversation. The, and we, we actually discussed that today when we were up there with the person that was in charge of the, the job. We didn't discuss them warranting their work at all, but discussed whether or not that's the right application to be able, I, I asked simply, could we just replace rubber roofing for a lot cheaper? And maybe it's a stronger rubber roofing or thicker or something along those lines. And the answer from them was that the combination of the snow load with the ice buildup that's created under that eave and then in the summer, when the metal roofing heats up, it moves and shifts. And there's, it's not tied into the main building. It's simply like abutted up to it. And there's a, it's about a six inch piece of rubber roofing that connects the two. And it's literally right on the seam where the main, the new roof abuts up to the old building. It's, it's like, it's like somebody, it almost looks like somebody took a razor blade and just cut it in the places that it's ripped. So it's, we attributed it a little bit to the snow load. Today when we were there, he discussed that the way that the roof expands, moves, shifts as it heats in the summer, in the hot summer. He said if we fix the rubber roofing to the way that it is today, it's just going to happen two years from now again. And that the best option we have to try to get this fixed for the long term is this option of changing the way the roof line runs.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Grassel.
If you remember, we did, we went through this process at the Civic Center with the front part and the flashing. We replaced it and it leaked down the wall. And then we just ended up billing over the top in that remodel, just to close that off so it wasn't sitting. Just to refresh memories.
Anybody else have anything? If you have your questions to bring back, you know, warranty and?
Yep. I certainly will for next week or for two weeks from now, I should say.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
My apologies, next week. I will have it ready for next week.
We knew what you meant. Review of Park and Rec policies and procedures. Reed.
Thank you again, Mr. President. So I've got a couple of different things included all in this RCA, but a lot of it in regards to different policies and procedures that the Park and Rec Department has been working on, really for the last probably four or five months even, and looking forward to for this, this coming fall/winter season. The, the first one that's in front of you is a really, I think, a big topic that I don't know that we have all of the answers to today. We met with the figure skating, a couple of people from our figure skating program, coaches today for almost two hours specifically about Safe Sport and how we're going to implement it, how we're going to practice it, how we're going to put it into place to make sure that we're adhering to the policy as it's being given to us by our governing bodies, which in the case of figure skating is US Figure Skating Organization. In the case of hockey, it's USA Hockey. But Safe Sport is a program that was created and designed by the US Olympic Committee and really kind of just handed down to all of the state, the national and then the state programs to find a way to adhere to. And it's a big, big conversation amongst all programs across the country to figure out how they're going to be able to adhere to it and practice the policy that's being handed to us. So we've discussed it at our Park and Rec Commission meetings a lot. And I think the first step of it is I think we need to get policies in place locally that are, basically they're templated policies that are being handed to us by USA Hockey or by USA Figure Skating that they're saying you need to have a policy such as this in place. So that's one step of it is I'd like to see us approve these policies. Part of it, you'll see with Minnesota hockey structure, is that they actually have included a letter that they want a response by August 25th of this year that we will adhere to. It's kind of an agreement that we will adhere to the policies as they are written. And it asks for, you'll see, if you read that, you'll, you'll see that it asks for a list of the programs, board of directors, local coordinators, tournament coordinators, anyone really that's associated with your hockey program at all. So that's part of this that I'd like some feedback from all of you on. If there's any direction you'd like to provide to it is we in East Grand Forks are different in that way than, than just about every other program in the state in that our hockey program is run through our Parks and Recreation Department, whereas just about all the other communities are, it's a private association that runs the program. So in our case, we don't have a board of directors or a local coordinator or a tournament coordinator. These would all be volunteer positions in another community where in our community we don't have those because it's run through our department. So when this letter asks for a list of the board of directors, we don't have that to provide. I'm still waiting to hear back from the Safe Sport Coordinator with Minnesota Hockey. If, if that's the case, in our sense, would he prefer that it be a list of city council members? Would he prefer that it be a list of Parks and Recreation Commissioners? Would he prefer it just be our Park and Rec staff members that are listed? Those are all questions I have that I don't have an answer on yet. We've, we've been playing phone tag and trying to get some correspondence back and forth. He understands our situation and that we're different because we've, we've gotten to know him fairly well the last couple of seasons, but, but he hasn't given us any guidance one way or another on how we'd like to see that done yet. So I'm hoping I can have a better answer for that. But on the Safe Sport conversation, at our Park and Rec Commission meetings, we've discussed the last few months that I think the best way for us to move forward with this would be that we find a way to create almost a committee of sorts that would include hockey members and figure skating members to be trained and certified and have their background checks done to be able to be some sort of leadership or provide some guidance to how we implement Safe Sport locally ourselves. More information than maybe you want to know on it is this season, this coming hockey season, for example, Minnesota hockey, all of our coaches, any of our team managers, any volunteer that's, that works with our program has to have a background check done before they're allowed to do so. Referees, anything, any adult. Right now, Minnesota hockey pays that background fee. They pay for it for any member they have associated with that. And it costs about between eight and $10 per background check to be done. Figure skating is similar in the same way where the US Figure Skating Program doesn't charge for their background checks. Going into next season, so the 2020 to 21 hockey season, the fee for the background check is going to go from between eight and $10 up to $30 per background check. And it's no longer only going to be required for coaches and team managers and someone like myself. They're expanding upon the number of people that are going to need to be background checked. Basically, anyone that has any personal interconnection with a player in a team setting or in a hockey sense will have to be background checked. So the combination of needing more background checks and the price going up from about $10 up to $30 is causing Minnesota hockey to say, we're no longer going to pay those fees for your program anymore. You're going to have to take that responsibility on yourself. So in that process of how we work through this, we need to figure out, since it's now going to cost us locally more money, how do we handle that, just the fee increase alone? And then how do we handle the situation of needing locker room monitors with all of our teams and who do we ask to do that? We, we almost, by the policy, the way it's written, we, we have to have a, a trained background checked, certified locker room monitor outside of or in the locker room for every single team setting at a practice night, at a game night, anything.
Well, that could be the coach, though.
It could be a coach, yes. Yep. And that's what Minnesota hockey is suggesting is that it be the coach that does that. But we know at the same time that a lot of our volunteer coaches are going to have the instant pushback of, that's not what I signed up for. I, I signed up, I want to coach the team. I don't want to sit in the locker room with 13, 14, 15 kids and make sure that they're behaving themselves when they're changing. So there's, there's a lot. I, I guess what I'm saying is there's a lot that needs to be talked through and worked out and how would you like us to proceed in having that conversation and working through those policies? That'd be the first one. And maybe if we want to visit on that, if anybody has any questions before we move into the next, next part of the RCA.
Anybody have any questions for Reed or direction you want to give them or comments? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. So are Mark or Katie eligible to be the coordinator of the, the Safe Sport Coordinator? Or is that dependent on whether or not employees are considered board members?
Right. I think they would be, I-
Or are we looking at another paid position or is this, or a volunteer?
In the case, for example, in the case of the figure skating club, our local figure skating club has a Safe Sport Coordinator that's designated already, that's a volunteer position, that kind of is expected to know the information of Safe Sport. I would say that it's a huge undertaking for a volunteer to know it, especially now that it's becoming more and more, there's more and more expectations of it at all times. In some cases, I would say, yes, we could probably designate somebody on our staff to be the Safe Sport Coordinator for this committee. But as part of what I touched on in the RCA that we found out last winter, when we have an actual Safe Sport investigation or a Safe Sport complaint filed, in the past, we've handled those, they maybe weren't necessarily Safe Sport, sent to Safe Sport, but we've handled them internally the best that we could where our staff, we felt like that was within our job was to make sure that we were, were handling any disciplinary action that was needed to be taken. We were informed last season under the new Safe Sport policy that we cannot be the people that make those decisions because we are too involved in the situation in a lot of cases. So to answer your question, yes, in some cases, I think one of our staff people could be a Safe Sport Coordinator in that they know the rules and know the policy, but they wouldn't necessarily be able to be part of a investigative, investigative process should there be a complaint filed.
So should that committee be some, you, you mentioned having people within the hockey and figure skating communities be part of that maybe oversight committee or, but those people could potentially also be too close to it.
Yeah.
On, I'm wondering, I mean, are you, is there ability to find someone outside of that, either of those committees that would be willing to, that's the tough thing.
That was part of our conversation is we felt we should have someone outside who has no personal interest in hockey or the figure skating.
And that would want to spend time to do it.
They also, they also have to take a Safe Sport course.
Right. So we're going to find someone off the street that's going to want to volunteer for hockey or figure skating, Safe Sport, but not be involved in it is a tough ask.
There's hours involved and just the, the course itself, the first time you get certified. Right now, it's a two-year recertification process, but the first year it's an eight to 12 hour course. And the second year, it's about an hour long recertification. Starting next season, 2020 to 21 season, it's going to be an annual course that you need to take the entire course every single year. So it's, it's intensive to be a part of it. But to your point of if you're too close to it, I think our responsibility is we need to make sure we have a certain set of people that are trained and able to understand the process. So that should we get a complaint, we understand how to go through that process. If, in certain cases, there have been neighboring communities that have had these same issues come up. And then when everyone in the program is too close to it, they ask people from neighboring communities to come in. So we've gone to a neighboring community and served on a, on a hearing panel for, for things in their programs and we'd very, very likely be able to do the same thing. We could ask a Crookston or a Thief River representative to come and sit in, on an investigative hearing in our program.
That's a great idea. And I would push to have a staffed person be in that coordinator role as much as possible because I think when it comes down to it's our program, right? And it's our liability. And to entrust some of that to volunteers, I think is, is kind of a, a big ask. I, I just, I think if we can do that. The other thing I had about the background check, so who then, who has access to those background checks and who becomes the gatekeeper as far as making determin-, you have a background check, you have to, what's the criteria? Who makes the decisions on whether someone's fit or what, what's the process for that?
The, nothing locally. It's all done through the US Center for Safe Sport and then the national governing body. So when, when I register, if I'm going to register to be a coach in our program, I have to certify through USA Hockey. And as soon as I pay the registration fee and sign up for that, then they're going to do, they're going to initiate the steps for a background check. We don't know the process yet of how that pay, paying the extra fee for the background check is going to work. Right now, USA Hockey takes the list of all coaches registered for Minnesota Hockey and just sends a bill to Minnesota Hockey and Minnesota Hockey pays that bill back. We don't know if USA Hockey is going to just charge instead of $65 to register, they're going to charge 95 to each coach and then we reimburse the coach. Or if they're going to turn around and said, send East Grand Forks Hockey a bill for thousands of dollars. We don't, we're not really, they haven't given any guidance on how that's going to work yet. But they review, they, they administer, they hold all the decision making in what firm they use to complete the background check, what the cost of it is, who is allowed to coach based off the results of that and who's not.
Reed, is there a number of people on that Safe Sport board? I can't remember. Was there a number that was given like?
I think it's three.
The suggested panel, if you're going to have an investigative or a disciplinary hearing, the panel is three people. And then one of those three people is designated as a fact finder. So they need to be somebody removed that can, completely from the situation and can be the spokesperson for the investigation. But the committee could be more than that. And that's what I'd like to see is that there's a larger committee that understands it so that if we get into a situation where people are too close, hopefully we have a committee of 10 people and we could find three that don't know anything about the incident and can still, and can then serve as that panel.
So could we go through the process like we, we go through for our other commissions? If somebody wanted to serve on the EDA, could we put something out there that would go through that so we could see how many people might want to be involved in something like this?
Having an employee by the mayor.
Old retired coaches or that have been out there that would still want to be involved and not, maybe, I don't, something that has a process.
It might only be one or two a year. There could be none, there could be five.
Right.
No, I'm sorry.
No worries. I think this is a really good effort. Every youth program is going through this right now in scouting. It's, it's all about youth protection and only when you protect the youth and coincidentally as you're protecting the youth, you're also protecting the adults from any unfounded, unmerited, unwarranted accusation. Because you have processes in place that as we're protecting the youth, we're also protecting those adults that are working with those youth from, from any unfounded accusations. This idea of coming in with a front end background check and going through that process will show that this individual was well qualified. We're not just pulling people off the street and, and having them train and work with our kids. And of course, you're dealing with protection on the ice and in the locker room. And it turns out even riding a bus through town can be potentially dangerous. Reed. And-
I hear you slipping on one.
The other thing that happens with this, we're talking mostly hockey and figure skating, but this mentality will carry over into everything we do in Parks and Rec. It'll carry over into our baseball programs and our park board programs for kids. It'll carry over into everything that we do. And so I absolutely applaud you. I was with you Reed last year as we dealt with certain things that, that were along this line. And even in that moment, that's when the eye started opening that, you know what, we're going to up our game here and do a better job of this for the benefit of the adults and for the benefit of the kids and even of course of the parents of those kids involved in our programs. This is a good effort. Oh, and I should add, I think a lot of these are going to be insiders on our committees and whatnot, but we want to make sure to choose ones that are respected. You know, they're going to, to have the expertise, to have the level of interest, the level of commitment. I think some of them will end up to be somewhat on the inside of, of what we've done either now or in the past. But let's make sure to pick the ones that are above reproach that we respect to help govern and oversee it locally. That's what I would say.
Mr. Grassel.
And I, I spent about half a day yesterday going through all of the handbook, the online stuff, the stuff that you provided and all the different rules that they have, they've gone through. And my biggest concern about this would be the, the hearing after the investigation, if there's a hearing, it's basically a, it's basically a, a trial. Okay? There, there can be attorneys, there's got to be findings of fact, there's got to be decision that's being ordered. And so I, I think it gets a little bit higher than just let's pick some people that are of good reproach and that, you know, beyond reproach in the city. I almost think we need to talk to Thief- I almost think we need to talk to Thief River and Crookston, and then coordinate those three-person boards to where their board could do an investigation of our issue and vice versa, and there almost needs to be somebody that has a little bit of, whether it's a judge or an attorney or a hearing officer, or somebody that's kind of familiar with the situation, that could assist in that board.
Volunteering, Ron?
I'd volunteer for some other city, you know what I mean? I don't know if I'd want to be the one sitting on it here in East Grand Forks, just due to my, the nature, but I wouldn't mind helping out another city if there was something on that line. But that's when, that was where all my questions came from when I was reviewing the information.
Ron, also someone with investigative ability?
That too, you know, because there has to be the investigation that's done, and then you take that investigation, and you make the very initial decision on whether or not you believe that there was a violation in the first place. And then if you find out that there was a violation, then you got to give them due process to be able to contest it, and then that hearing group makes the determination one way or another. And that, depending upon the circumstances of its sexual nature or something on that line, it's just taken out of our hands altogether, and brought to a different governing board.
We can make the decision, but they can overturn it.
You know.
And.
Very easily, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit complicated, actually.
The process is, sorry to interrupt you, the process is complicated, and then the dual sport function of it makes it even more complicated, because the policy in general is different between activities. The hockey policy is similar, but in other ways completely different than what the figure skating policy is, and how it's practiced, how it's upheld, how it's sent, you know, the hockey one, any complaint you get, it instantly goes to the coordinator at Minnesota Hockey, and he decides whether it needs to go to the national level or be sent back to the local level, or he's going to deal with himself. The figure skating policy is sent and dealt with first at the local level, and then graduates up from there if they don't like the answer of the local panel. So they're just, the process is different in every case.
And we're talking about a quasi-governmental organization doing this, how does that work within the potential of a criminal investigation?
Well, then that would be on the outside of that.
That's what I'm saying, so now all of a sudden, if there's a criminal investigation, this investigation wouldn't proceed or could, I mean?
That's true, I think what ends up happening is it turns in, if I read that correctly, if it turns into any type of a criminal investigation, then this whole process kind of stops, and then it would be taken over by a criminal investigation, so.
So does this, do these people become mandatory, like reporters?
They are mandatory reporters.
So like, all of a sudden, like, if they do find, then it has to go to a criminal?
It becomes a mandatory reporter, if you believe, and even if you found that it's true or not true, if you get a credible, if you get reported to you a credible incident, you're a mandatory reporter, you have to report that, then child protection or whatever would end up doing their investigation regarding that issue. But, so it's really in-depth, and, but that's, I don't, I believe we have to adhere to it, or we can't be in, we basically have no hockey program or figure skating program.
I think that, like what Reed brought up and what Ron brought up, is trying to figure out some sort of consortium where we're kind of working with each other and amongst each other, and like I told Reed, I said, maybe get the city attorneys of each of these cities involved and say, we're kind of going to be the referees on these deals, just because it is high stakes. It's very high stakes for the kids, it's high stakes for the coaches and parents, it's high stakes for the cities, a lot of stuff can happen.
Again, we're in a unique situation.
Right.
Where we run our hockey program, and Crookston doesn't, Thief River doesn't.
Grand Forks doesn't.
Grand Forks doesn't, I mean, so we're kind of, we're very unique, and that's kind of the situation we're in.
I would hope that with all this preparation, there's still an opportunity to settle minor things in a very subdued way, right? Doesn't have to immediately escalate to, you know, to the top of whatever, because a lot of stuff doesn't deserve that sort of fanfare, you know? You kicked my foot on the ice and it hurt me, okay? Oh, with the tribunal, we got to get them in on that. So somewhere in your common sense has to still prevail, where minor offenses are handled in a simple, straightforward way without having to take it up the food chain, that's what I would hope.
Yep.
You're not talking about like breaking sticks over people's heads, is that what you're talking about?
Not that, that would have to go up.
Question I have is, you know, with all this, does this Safe Sport thing, does the schools have to follow that at all, in the same realm, or is that totally some different?
State High School League handles everything in the high school.
I mean, is there ever a path that crosses with that? Never? So it totally?
Well, coming towards us, it certainly does, not, I wouldn't say that anything that we have goes to a school, but under the Safe Sport policy, anything behavioral that happens in a school setting, if there's two classmates that are teammates and they get into an argument at school, if it qualifies as a Safe Sport, and it has anything to do with, or any potential to impact their team behavior in any way, it can be a Safe Sport violation. So we no longer, yeah.
Has there been discussions with the high school and the high school?
Or junior, or the middle school or anybody?
Anything, yeah. So then you run into an issue of the school, it's confidential, they're not allowed to share detail on any of that, but we're supposed to look at it as a Safe Sport violation.
Carla?
Doesn't the school have mandatory requirements for, I mean, isn't there people in the school that we probably could use as a resource, maybe to help with that, because they have those mandatory requirements to also, right?
For, what are you talking about?
Well, if there's an incident, they have to report it. Don't, doesn't the school officials have to go through those kind of things too, so that maybe that's a resource the city could use to work with the school?
But those incidences go, it's a whole different process.
Right, and just that they may know what to look for though, you know?
Yeah. I would imagine those are confidential.
Yes.
I don't know if we got anywhere with you on that, but, I mean, it's.
I think, I think that the first thing that he needs is for us to be able to approve that we're going to sign this and going to follow the policies, and then we got to put it into place, otherwise, I don't think, if you blow that deadline, they might not allow you to participate.
Yeah, if we don't have it signed by the deadline, we can't register teams for hockey this season, that's the first thing. But then, but then we have the issue, the more difficult part of it is figuring out how we're actually going to adhere to the policy.
So you're agreeing to do something, but we don't know how we're going to do it?
Yeah.
Yep.
And you have to have that in place, does it say, you get to sign this thing, but does it say it has to happen in place by the time you sign it, or do they give us time after that?
It pretty much says that as soon as you sign it, you're going to adhere to the policy as it's written.
So for the local tribunal, I'm sure you're still looking for direction, is it members of the council, is it members of Park and Rec Commission, is it a separate commission, is it staff? That was your front-end question, is what will be the composition of our local tribunal or whatever number of people we're going to have on there?
But he's asking that question to them, to see what they want.
Yeah, I'm hoping to get some feedback from Minnesota Hockey Safe Sport Coordinator on how he wants to see that, because he does have some understanding of our situation and how we're operated here in comparison to other communities.
Because is even a person that's on a council, is that too close, is that too biased towards the city's perspective? I mean.
Well, I'd suggest we go forward with the policy, because we're going to need to have our kids registered, because we can't, we cannot register, and then we're just going to have to trudge through it.
Our roster, like our roster registration deadline is basically by December 31st, we have to have a roster submitted to USA Hockey, but we wouldn't be able to play USA Hockey sanctioned games without being considered a member in good standing, so that needs to happen by, we'd sure like to have it happen before we even open registration this fall, but if it's not that, it would need to be by October 15th, we'd want to have everything.
So with signing that, you don't have to detach the committee members, you're just signing that sheet saying you're going to do it?
That's why I need guidance from them on, if they want a list of members that are responsible to adhere to it. The way that they ask for it is they want the association's board directors.
That's what I'm wondering, I mean, if you, we sign it, we can't just tell them, hey, we're not, we'll get to it, we'll create it. Us signing that by August 25th is still telling us that this is in place and this is what it looks like.
We have to know by next.
And they're going to want a list of names that's responsible for making sure it's done.
So, I mean, we're going to have to have two things, a special meeting from, after you get it put together, because 10 days from now, it's, you know.
Or if you can get it done by Tuesday.
Hoping.
Well, there's, I mean, if what I'm hearing is that you think the direction to go is to find a way to put a committee together to be the experts on this, that's not going to happen in 10 days. I mean, there's, there almost needs to be, to a point, a vetting process, even in figuring out who those members are, because it can't just be any.
Those members that have the background checks done on them, right?
And they need to be Safe Sport certified, or get Safe Sport certified.
Is that going to be a requirement, hey, we have these people, want to do it, are you okay with that pending approval? I mean, is that something that you can ask them?
Yeah.
Because assigning it to not have anything, they're going to go, well, you didn't fill it out, you're not going to, you can't register. I don't want that to happen.
Right.
Just, one thing that won't change through this process is, all the front-end stuff that we do to keep kids safe, and that's been going on for forever, as long as we've had programs, hockey, baseball, park board, any of that stuff, keeping kids safe has always been a priority, we're just trying to conform to a new system, and all that front-end work stuff that we do, you know, educating our volunteers, educating our staff, educating our coaches, that's the most important thing, and sure enough, we're going to come up with a way to resolve disputes on the back end, but the goal is to have no disputes at all, because kids are being treated well. And I know you'll do that, Reed, I know that that's going to be a strong priority carrying out through all the programs, is keeping them safe, so that the number of disputes that we have to take up the food chain is zero, because that's the way we've always been, and that's the way we're going to continue to be.
Jones?
Thank you. I'm sitting here kind of listening and thinking that maybe, this is something, maybe somebody should contact the insurance company, because, and the reason I say that is because sometimes insurance companies have policies and different things, and that maybe would pertain to this, or maybe kind of guide a little bit on what they would like to have, and what they would like to see or whatever. I know it sounds kind of crazy, but, you know, with the type of thing we're talking about, might not hurt to touch base with the insurance, just to see if they have any kind of guidelines or anything like that to go on to.
Maybe the league, the league I'm sure has some ideas.
Well, speaking from, if I can, speaking from one of the situations we went through last hockey season, when we sought advice from the league and from outside, from a few outside attorneys that specialize in this kind of thing, the resounding, and it's not a popular comment, but the resounding question that was continually asked is, why is the city operating this program? A private association should be operating this, because it puts an exorbitant amount of risk on how the city operates, to have a city council be responsible for adhering to these policies. That's, I know that's not, that's not the way that we do it, and we're very successful at the way that we do it, and we like the way that we do it, but that's the feedback we get from the league and from Kennedy and Graven, when we discuss it, is, you're the only program in this whole state doing it that way.
It's got to be among our options, I mean, it's always got to be on the table as a fallback.
It doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that our local hockey program and our local figure skating program still need to have a Safe Sport policy, still need to adhere to it, it's just changes who's responsible for it.
One question I do have, when Mr. Allen was speaking, it popped in my mind, let's say they charter a bus, so does a bus driver, who's going to be in contact with them, have to have a background check and be okayed by?
Yes.
Our drivers do.
So with Safe Sport?
We have to have background checks and all that stuff.
But with Safe Sport, not, is that going to be required?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Not even that he does his own?
Not just a standard, but?
Not even have his own, is it actually, it has to be done by them for his?
Ours is federal.
It's, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to a bus driver, but I know specifically in a figure skating competition, the new policy is to the point that if you have somebody greeting skaters at the door when they enter to come into the building, that person has to be Safe Sport qualified and background checked, a volunteer to greet people at the door.
So even our part-time ring workers are going to have?
Yes.
If they have, if, the way that it reads right now, if they have personal contact with the skater.
Or your parking wreck employee, is it?
Yep.
Lot to do with.
And that's the other thing that comes up with the insurance company on a background check, you know, they might, you might think it's some, not no major deal, that maybe what they might find on that background check, but the insurance might have a different story on it. So that's why, and I know that's the way it is with me at my place, so you got to, that's why you kind of, I think we should involve them and just see if, kind of policies or whatever they have, but.
I would say that the risk is no different, whether it's run by the city or by a private organization, it's just who assumes that risk, and I have every confidence that this is the proper organization to run this, we've been doing it for a long time successfully, and I think we have the right people that can do it over the long term. I think what happens with private organizations is sometimes the leadership in those, well, some would argue the leadership in this organization, but overall, I think that we have a consistent, consistently high-quality standard that we, that we put in these programs, and I wouldn't want a private organization running it, I think we do it as well as it can be done, so I wouldn't want to move that in that direction. I think we gave you some pretty solid advice there, Reed.
Didn't tell you anything, but we gave you advice.
So, I mean, when you talk, hopefully you can get ahold of them tomorrow and the next few days, so we can get this approved for you.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at, you know, the persons or the positions are covered by this agreement, admin, should include these, and there's, it's going to be a quick turnaround.
Yeah.
Good luck. Move on to the next one.
Yeah, so part B of it then, again, along the conversation of the, we've been looking at a lot of our policies and how we, how we practice kind of what we do in Parks and Recreation, we came into a situation where we have some programs, hockey being one, for example, that, again, Minnesota hockey dictates that there are certain programs you can and can't be a part of, so like, for example, if someone from Grand Forks can't participate in our hockey program, because they live in Grand Forks, they have a program in Grand Forks they can participate in, unless there's, if they want to, and they can show a reason that they have an exorbitant reason that benefits them to do so, there's a waiver process, you can go through, through the state and through the national levels to get that approved. We've had other programs intermittently that we've, on some cases, allowed participants from other communities that have a program in their own community and in other cases don't. So we, I brought this to the Park and Rec Commission as a topic that we've not had a consistent answer on through our department, and asked for their guidance on how to put together a policy that would spell out more clearly who can participate in our program, and hopefully spells out who can't participate in our programs. So that policy is in front of you. Basically, the general idea is just to make sure that if a interested participant in our program has an opportunity to participate in the community that they live in, within their age groups or skill groups, that this policy would say they need to participate in that program rather than in ours. And the biggest reason for that is that, our, my biggest reasoning, and I think the commission's biggest reasoning in looking at this policy, is that we know that our programs are heavily subsidized by our tax base, and while participants pay a different fee if they live outside of our community than they do if they live in it, it still is not to the degree that it covers up for that subsidy that our general tax base helps to pay for, and so. base helps to pay for, uh, and so we would, we would like to make a more clear-cut example across all of our programs of, um, who can and who can't, so that we don't have to answer it on a case-by-case basis as much as, as it can be a, a policy that we can put on our website and get out to our people, so that they can understand, um, who, who can and who can't, and for what fee. So that's what's in front of you here.
Question I have right away for you, is, just gonna throw it out, you know, Mr. Helm said, like, back in the years, for hockey, what if it's fifty-fifty, the kid lives fifty-fifty, the parents, one lives in Grand Forks, or East Grand Forks, one lives in Fisher, or Crookston, excuse me, I mean, how's that gonna be, cuz they don't have a primary residence, how is that handled, then? It's through your curveball, I know, I'm just, cuz it does happen nowadays.
Yeah, I think it goes towards you going to school, then.
That's what I would say.
That's why, is that fall back to that, that's?
Yeah, that's what I would certainly say, is that, the, the idea of the policy is to get residents of our community, or if they live in a community outside of, outside of this, that if they go to our, our school district, um, and our, our sports, or competitive sports specifically being ones that are feeders, hopefully, for our high school programs, that that would be part of the criteria to allow them to play in our program.
But it doesn't say that the kid, it's a primary, it just says, primary is resident of the, a parent or parents, right? So, to me, whether the kid is there twenty-five percent of the time, or fifty percent, or seventy-five, it's where their parent lives, right?
So it goes on to say that attends the school in East Grand Forks.
The second bullet, says it attends.
So if they reside at both locations, fifty-fifty, that's.
Well, even, yeah, even, even when you have different joint custody arrangements with children, there's always a primary, there's always a primary location where they go to school. So you can.
Throwing the curveballs at you, so.
No, no, I'm just saying, even in those situations where there's shared custody of children, there's always a primary location where they end up having to go to school. Unless, I guess, if they were homeschooled, if you really wanna start looking at a law school exam, but, uh, uh, under the, most of those circumstances, you're not gonna look at that. But I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Helmstead.
I guess one of my questions is, so we just talked about how cities aren't, except for here, cities aren't the, the purveyor of the programs, so is there, forgive my ignorance, is there like districts, like, school districts, where certain programs have territories? Or is it just, this is, I mean, to say, because we, we refer to, that they aren't served by another, or there, it isn't offered by another area, but if, nobody else, if, if it was all cities, you'd say, well, if it was offered within their city, but say you're, you know, say you're in wherever, and does, just outside of Crookston, is that considered not, not served by the Crookston thing, or is it, or is it, you have to live in Crookston, but that shouldn't matter, because Crookst, the city of Crookston doesn't organize it, it's a private group?
I think it kinda all goes back to that open enrollment, if they're, they might live in Crookston, but they might be going to East Grand Forks School District, and I think that's what you were talking about, that, so, it's kinda like Oslo and Alvarado, you know, they're all in East Side School District, but they have their own little community, but they don't have the program, so.
Yeah.
You know, you gotta be able to, I think, it's like, like Ron said, it's, it's kinda got their primary school district that they go to, and.
Yeah. It, it varies in each, I think, in each sport a little bit, in that some are governed more by the governing body at the higher level, and some aren't as much, like, hockey is the easiest one for me to relay the, the situation to, but, in the, in the situation of youth hockey, if there was somebody that lived in Crookston, but went to school in East Grand Forks, Minnesota hockey would consider that they're a Crookston hockey player, because that's where they live, is, they wouldn't care that they opened and enrolled in a new East Grand Forks school, they're, if they're in the youth program, they're a Crookston hockey player. And then if that family wants to ask for release out of Crookston's program, they can do that. And that release form is run through Minnesota hockey, but it needs to be signed by Crookston's hockey director, if they wanna come to East Grand Forks, we, our hockey director has to sign off and say that we agreed to that, and then the district director, who's located in Bemidji, has to sign off and send it into the state, so that all parties involved say, yes, we're, we're okay with it. Crookston has a hockey program, so that's why that's the case there. If it's Alvarado, and there's a kid in Alvarado, he basically has open enrollment options, if that person, he or she, wants to play in East Grand Forks, they can say, I live in Alvarado, as far as Minnesota hockey's concerned, they say, you don't have a home program in, in, in Alvarado, you can go play wherever you choose. And then it's up to us, our, our hockey director and the district director sign a form and say, we're okay with the kid from Alvarado playing in our program. If it's, um, if he plays in Crookston one year and says, I don't like Crookston, they aren't good enough, I wanna go to East Grand Forks, then it goes back to the old process of both local programs directors and the district director have to sign off on it. So that's Minnesota hockey, they have a very detailed form and policy of how that all works. In another sport, like figure skating, it's much more of a private-based situation, where, um, if somebody from East Grand Forks wanted to skate in Crookston, because Crookston had a, had a better program, if Crookston's club said, yeah, we want them, cuz they're good, they can just drive over there and skate, sign up and skate. That's what we're trying to fix in these situations with this policy, is, uh, an example is, we had a baseball player from Thompson this year that participated in our program, Thompson has youth baseball, it was just, for whatever reason, they decided to be in our program. And that's something I feel like that, if there's a program in their community that they can go to and be a part of, I'd rather they go to that program than come to ours.
Carla, did you have something? Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
Yeah, so, if someone, it's, talks about homeschooled, and it says their participation is based on their primary home residence, so what if someone lives out on County Route seventeen, outside of city limits, in Polk County, is homeschooled, is that considered, uh?
East Grand Forks. They, they could come in our program.
Under what rule?
Seventeen, though, good, it's Fisher School District, Philadelphia.
Under what rule? I guess my point is, is if you wanna have this, so it's rule-based, there's nothing in here that gets to that. You know, I, I mean.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. And, and that's.
And that's, that's.
Wouldn't that fall under number two? Registered participant.
Yeah.
Outside the city limits, but within Polk County, and attends East Grand Forks Schools, and then you go down to the bottom.
But they're not.
But recognizes, down to C, recognizes the homeschool attendee.
But it says attendees of home, or charter will be considered for participation based on their primary home residence.
Well, I think sometimes.
I think it'd be bullet three, bullet three is their primary residence, is outside city limits, but within Polk County, but the community they live in doesn't have the sport offered, so then we're not really worried as much about the school, if they live just outside Fisher and are homeschooled, Fisher doesn't have whatever sport it may be, that would allow them.
And I guess.
There's, there's, that's the thing, with, with anything, we went through, I mean, hours of these scenarios and trying to find a policy, and that, that's part of why we came up with the, the last bullet being the thirty-day, the out-of-town participation request form, is so that if there is anything that falls outside of these easily bulleted circumstances, that they could be reviewed, and then given an answer to whether or not they could participate, cuz so we could take some of those circumstances into account. Our, our hope would be that, you know, if there's, if they live in a neighboring community and have the activity offered in that community, that we wouldn't need to allow them into our program.
And I guess, I mean, to me, there's two issues, right? It's who can participate, and then what do we charge, right? Cuz if the argument is, number one, we're subsidizing it as taxpayers of East Grand Forks, we should have this, we, we want it for East Grand Forks, um, which I agree with, for the most part, um, but we do allow these other things at a higher cost, you know, and we don't want it to be this, like, uh, like a private thing where people are buying their way in either, but I can see the case, you mentioned, like, the Thompson thing, I'm, the, the reason why I think that could happen, and maybe it's not what happened here, but, a lot of people come and work here, they, they come to town, they spend their days here, they're working, if you're a parent, and kid is in Thompson, or where, maybe even rural Thompson, and, but mom works in East Grand Forks, it might make sense for her to come and do their activities here.
Might be in daycare, too.
Right, or daycare here, or something like that, so, like I said, I, I understand trying to make it exclusive, but, and I know, I'm definitely on board with trying to make hard rules, but, to me, something like that, if someone's willing to pay more, because it's more convenient, because not, they're not trying to stack teams, or it's not like some, I'm trying to be on the best team, or we're trying to make this thing, but if it's just for participation and making it easier for parents to work in town, maybe that should be a consideration, too, I don't know, I, I don't have, that, it makes it more gray in money than what you probably want, but I can see that being.
But that's exactly what you're saying is part of the basis for why we wanted to try to put a policy like this in place, is so that there's some consistency to it. And if there's, then, even taking it beyond consistency, in a way, there's a paper trail to describe the reason we've given, the answers we've given, instead of having to have on an annual or a semi-annual basis at each registration, a conversation of, well, you let them do it three years ago, so you have to let me do it today. I mean, if we come up with a practice like this, and we can put some procedure into place, and have a paper filing system, so that, at least, even then, there's an answer, if we have an out-of-town request form, and it gets filled out, and it gets approved, at least there's an answer to why we did it, and why it was allowed, instead of just a willy-nilly, you did it three or four years ago, you have to do it now. That's part of the, the idea, with, behind it, at least.
Be done in your form, the word days does not need an apostrophe.
Thank you.
Mr. Room? Can Valice have anything on this?
Appreciate it.
None. Mr. Hootman? Looking good.
Thank you.
Number six, review and discussion of potential assessment city projects and sales tax projects, Mr. Emery and Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, well, I guess this whole process kinda started as Carla, um, started requesting from department heads, um, you know, what they were gonna have for budget items, um, for 2020, um, I guess, as city engineer, I kinda asked the question, you know, what, what are you gonna need from me for any potential upcoming projects and stuff, so, with that said, I had kinda spent probably fifteen, twenty minutes just putting together a list of any and every potential project that I foresaw, you know, probably next year and beyond, um, so I put together a, a list, um, if you remember, probably two weeks ago, I think David handed out that list, um, of projects, that was kinda my chicken scratchings on a yellow piece of paper, um, and I think there was maybe some misunderstanding a little bit, too, after that meeting, as I, I think there was some, there was some thought that that list of projects was all projects that could be potential projects for the sales tax referendum, so, what I did is I went back, I took that list that was kinda generated, and I broke them out by potential assessment projects, um, city projects, you know, potentially some upcoming federal projects that we may have, and then, you know, what are some of the potential sales tax referendum-type projects, so, so that's kinda how this was developed, so to start with, again, I listed five different projects there that are just potential assessment projects. The first three, I think, are reconstruction projects, we've had discussion as this group that we need to look at modifying our assessment policy for, how are we gonna handle assessment projects? Um, and I know when we brought that forward, when David even brought that forward the first time, I believe it was Mr. Helm said, you know, why are we looking at some of these cities, or some of these communities that are down in the cities, why aren't we looking at the Fiverr in Crookston? So, with that, I think David has reached out to Crookston, I think he has some information, the way I understood it, the Fiverr didn't have an assessment policy, but David got a lot of information from them as far as how they handle assessments, so, David's intent, I believe, is the next work session on August 27th, he's gonna bring that forward again, some more information for you, for you guys, you know, so again, we can start looking at, um, you know, how do we wanna modify our current assessment policy to handle reconstruction projects, so, so that's kind of an update on that. Potential city projects, um, you know, we do have the SafeFrozen School Sidewalk Project, um, that we did receive a hundred and thirty-seven thousand in, uh, grant dollars, so that's a, you know, potential project that either, I think, 2021 or 2022 is kinda the timeframe for that project, so that's something we may even look for next year. The Quiet Zone, um, you know, we've talked about that, again, I mean, that could be anywhere from literally very little cost to the city, up to two million dollars worth of cost, just kinda depending on, you know, do we decide to close the intersection of Third or whatever, so, on that one, I know David had worked with Nancy, um, and what they did is, they did, or they're doing, and maybe making can help me on this, but within a thousand feet of that intersection, within a thousand-foot radius, they got a list of all the businesses, residents within, within a thousand feet, and then David was gonna put together a letter, um, and kinda get their feedback in regards to, if that, get their feedback in regards to if that intersection was to be closed, you know, so I don't know if that ever did go out.
That's still in work in progress.
That's still in work in progress, okay, so that's something they're working on. The ADA sidewalk, uh, sidewalk ramp improvements, the city does have a transition plan right now, so, there really is no specific timelines in that transition plan, but the city's gotta be making good faith efforts to work towards meeting, um, their transition plan goals. So the discussions we've had is, I think the city's gonna, um, basically budget, try to do about fifty thousand dollars worth of work every year, and I think the thought was that those dollars would actually be pulled right out of the state aid maintenance funds that you receive every year, um, you know, that's how we would kinda pay for some of those improvements. Something coming up is our 2022 federal project, um, again, the city receives federal dollars every four years, um, in the amount of about eight hundred and sixty thousand. Currently, on the STIP, um, is the potential roundabout at Bigland Road and Reinhardt Drive, um, I mean, that is something that if the city still wishes to pursue that as a potential project, we're gonna probably have to start working on sooner or later, cuz there could potentially be some property acquisition there, the city would have to make, um, as well as water and light has some pretty major electrical items at that intersection that would have to be relocated. And I know Keith and Jeff and those guys, they had estimated, you know, just their costs, they're probably looking at a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, to relocate their equipment there, so, um, and then, I think, prior to the roundabout being on the STIP, um, you know, 10th Street Northeast, some improvements in the industrial park, I think, was on the STIP at one point, um, so again, I, I think, you know, those are just some things we probably gotta figure out in the relatively near future and start working towards, cuz 2022 seems a long way out, but if we're gonna start acquiring property and, you know, electrical relocation-type work, um, you know, we can be looking a year-plus, Ron, I'm thinking with any property acquisition, that type of stuff, so. Um, and then we did just, I did just kinda list, um, some potential projects, you know, for a potential sales tax ref, sales tax referendum, um, so kinda just laid them out, again, this was just some of my thought between myself and some of the department heads. And then on the backside of the page, I think Carla and/or Megan, um, had got some information from the league on some sales tax projects in communities that are doing it, so, if you guys wanna add to that?
Um, it was asked if there were any limitations.
Um, it was asked if there were any limitations, um, on a sales tax amounts, years, stuff like that. And the email that Carla had received from the league basically stated that at this time, the state is looking at these on a case by case basis, and, um, there are no, um, limits or time limits at this point in time. Um, you do see a variety of years and a variety of amounts from the different cities. Um, I will add that these cities did not go under the, um, did not have to follow the new, uh, sales tax regulations that went into effect on August first. So, um, some of these cities, I think International Falls is redoing every single street in their entire city. Um, it's like an estimated a hundred and ten million dollar project, and I think they're looking at getting about thirty million from sales tax to help defer some of those costs. So some of this, um, could have maybe qualified under the new regulations, but, um, at this time, they did not have to go through the same criteria that we would have to go through to continue with the sales tax.
Okay, so, so again, you know, I think, you know, this was probably somewhat for informational purposes. Um, I guess if there's any projects too that you, you know, you think we need to add to the list, but, you know, again, we're going to be kind of working with Carla too, and if there's some of these things that we need to, you know, include with the budget for twenty twenty, we'll try to get them included too, so.
Remind me, if we look at the.
Bridge.
Huh?
A bridge.
The bridge? If you look at the swap with the state, there is no potential high cost for us except for lights and stuff like that, when we're talking about the swap of the, the MERS and Business Highway Two, would that be figured, there's no, that wouldn't be considered as a project in here?
You're talking the jurisdictional transfer? Um, I didn't include that at this time, um, you know, because like we talked, um, you know, if we did look at doing that swap and reconstructing, uh, Business Highway Two, you know, the state, you know, the state would, or the city would lead the project, the state would just reimburse you, or if you're going to get a lump sum payment, so I really didn't, I guess.
Except for, let's say they reimbursed us, we, or whatever, we still would be responsible for some of the light, stoplights and stuff like that, weren't we?
Yeah.
It seemed like it was close to a wash though. Because they're going to turn it back, or we're going to pay for whatever, so.
Add in the back here, maybe that's a possibility, we might have, let's say come back to us again and.
Right, so, no, and I, I think that's, I mean, we could add that kind of to the list too, just kind of keep it in our minds, keep it out there too. And, and I did, after we kind of discussed that jurisdictional transfer, um, Min Dot had a list of probably three, four items, so, you know, just questions we had. I did reach out to them again today, he's hoping within a week, they're going to provide us with a letter, um, hopefully with answering a lot of the questions that we still had out there, so.
One of the questions was going to be the condition of the pavement currently, kind of section by section, to help guide us to the decision of would we opt for a full replacement of it and they pay, or take the cash and, and stage it out as the, as the thing actually fails, if we're going to do this at all?
Yeah, and I believe that's one question they're going to answer.
Yep. Do we have any questions, what did he put in front of you? See none there?
Um, I guess the next.
Thing, are we all ready to really hammer out, roll up our sleeves and hammer out a true replacement policy? I hope we are, I mean, really, folks, get your heads around that. You know, leave it alone is one option, and then if we leave it alone, we won't be doing any street replacements. But then with the research that they're doing, really start to get your head around, what does that look like? What part would be paid for by adjacent property owners and to the city share, what are the source of those funds? Really try to start, or, or leave it alone, maybe Clarence, we just leave it alone.
Just leave it alone. Just change your special assessment policy.
So please come ready to the next work session and, and spend some time wrapping your head around this thing before, between now and then.
Megan, you have something?
Uh, the only other thing I wanted to add was when it comes to the sales tax stuff, if you guys are considering the first deadline resolution has to be sent to the state, um, by January thirty first. So that gives us just a few months to come up with the projects and the estimates and what is needed, and the first step is getting, well, first step is deciding, but our first deadline isn't coming up in January. So, um, just keep that in mind, and do you want this brought back to the next work session? Sales tax projects and, or do you want to think about it? And we'll bring it back in a month? Because I guess to keep the.
Don't we have to wait a year though?
We can, we, we can start the process, so if, if, if we are done collecting in the month of July, we're done collecting in the month of July, that does not stop us from starting the process. We could get everything in place, especially since next year there is an election, we won't have to hold a special election and incur those additional costs. And then if it passes and everything goes into play, we would be able to start collecting sales tax the following July.
It has to be in a general election?
Yes.
It cannot be a separate election?
That is correct.
Thanks, um, when you looked at the list that was provided, they were awfully round numbers. Are those actuals? Because I remember when we, we did ours, it was like out to the penny. Is it, is the, are the new rules that you have to account for every dollar, or is it just that's how we did it? Or are we able to have some sort of round figures or what? I mean, obviously you still have to sell it to the legislature, so you don't want it to say fifty million dollars plus or minus twenty. But all these ones were all rounded numbers.
I think right now we're just basing everything on estimates, and do you, I'll have to double check right now.
Ours was rounded. It said, we passed it to two, two million, one hundred and forty-two.
But these are like thirty million.
Thirty, thirty, thirty million.
I mean, two hundred and forty-two thousand.
Yeah, and there was different rules that are in place. The first thing that we got to make sure is, is that it's got regional significance, and then after that, you got to put it together with some type of an item, you know, kind of a breakdown, but it's not going to actually be to the penny, because it's obviously it's going to be spread out over time. And then the next thing that you have to do is once you've done that, is provide it to the state, and then they're going to be able to line item veto it if they want to, to say some of it, yes, some of it, no. And then if they approved it, then you have to get it passed by the, uh, by the, by the, the public, you know? And so when I was looking at your list, I think the best thing, if you do that, is I would lump everything together. You're not going to do the VFW, turn it into a wellness center unless you're going to be able to build, uh, a new rink at the civic center. So that becomes one big project that you itemize and put together, in my opinion. Most of these, and then you, you say, for instance, you're, uh, the, the other, or the parks, okay, LaFave Park and such, you put together your master park plan, everything's in there where you show that over the next twenty years or whatever, we're maintaining the shelters, we're doing the, the additions to the, uh, the park, you, you put all that together with round figures and you ask them to do that. Uh, if you look at most of the projects out there, they always have some type of a recre, you know, most of them have some type of, or a majority of them have some type of a recreational or a building project that's with them. Um, and, and with the exception of a couple of them, most of them had those as projects with the, and then you had like International Falls was doing all of their, their basically street infrastructure. I think that under a lot of the circumstances with the modification of the rules to show regional significance, some of those things would automatically be taken out because you're not going to have regional significance for, for instance, trying to put in a quiet zone, if that's something that you were talking about, because that's going to pretty much just benefit us. But I, I think most of them would be coming to where you're going to have your parks and wrecks, you're going to bring in people, you're going to have your boat ramps, you're going to have your new civic center where we do regional, uh, games and, and competitions and those types of things. And, uh, that's just my reading of it. I think you should probably also have a little bit of a chit, chit chat with your legislatures to find out what their take on it is. Yeah, so.
Better be what our take is.
But, but I, I, I think that, you know, to give you, give you a better understanding of what they're looking at on, on, on approval of, of different projects, um, that would be just my, my two cents.
Questions if we want to bring back the sales tax stuff for the next work session?
Or do you want to wait until, um, I think, what, beginning of October, we should have our report?
Yeah, I would think by late September, we'll start to have some ordinary numbers that will be finalized early October.
Better though, is it ten, we'd have that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it might help you guys make a decision. So I mean, if, if that's a what if, and that's kind of a big what if, we might as well hold off until you have more information in front of you. So I guess, uh, for staff, I guess we would just like to know when you want to see this again.
Maybe wait to have their report back and go through it.
Okay.
Don't you think, or? Everybody else fine with that, or? Mary, you have a question?
To the question of sales tax, um, I think it's important also that we have the mindset that anything we can fund, any project that we can fund through the normal channels, that's of course our first objective. If we can make it fit into our city budget, that's what our people would prefer, because this really is additional taxation upon them and of course on the region. And then the other thing is, I think, I had someone say, do you understand what the word sunset means? Does that word mean anything to you, the word sunset? What that means is when this period of sales tax ends, it ends. And if we're too eager maybe to come back with another one right away, that doesn't sit well with a lot of them. So I think it's probably wise to, to step one, again, look at what can we fund through the normal channels, and step two, only those things that, that do meet these criteria and, and no more, you know, just, just those things that have to go along that line. We're going to have a Dickens of a time funding our arena situation, we know that. That's been a little bit of a train wreck out ahead of us that we have not been able to reckon with. That one probably will meet the, the threshold. And yet, as that one is there, we can look ahead and be pretty strategic and, and plan for it, and I think our people would fully understand that. Um, but probably it's good to, uh, when, when it does sunset, you know, let it, let it do its thing and we'll let it simmer for a while, and I, it's good to work behind the scenes to, you know, be strategic on these things, but I think our people need a little break too.
Anybody else have anything? I think we got your direction, Megan, and, okay. Entertained a motion adjourned?
Ooh.
Who by veteran, second by grass, so all in favor say aye. Close, same sign, motion's carried, meaning adjourned.